I think the logical way to begin is a nice general question as to what motivated you this time to actually jump in and stick with it and file your papers and run. What difference would it make to the people of Palo Alto if you're serving the city council or not?
Well, a couple of things. Let me give you just a little bit of backstory. I had a career in private security and eventually became frustrated that that wasn't contributing out to the community. That wasn't doing what I wanted to do with my life. So I decided to go back to school and study politics because I was always frustrated with politics. I always found myself complaining and whining, decided if I'm going to whine that much, I better do something about it. You know, complaining about these lazy public servants and government staff. So went to UC San Diego, got my political science international relations degree, moved back to Palo Alto, to my hometown, and started working for the local state senate office. And that's the kind of public service that I thought I was going to be doing. And looking at things as a resident in the town I grew up in, now having a chance to work with the city council, work with city staff, work with the school board, work with some of the neighboring towns, kind of opened my eyes to what the city's doing well and what the city needs to do, I think, a little bit better. One of the other things that really has changed over the last couple of years for me is seeing the discourse in town become very contentious in a way that saddened me as a resident. You know, this is my hometown and it really hurts to see the very painful discussions that people have been having about issues that are important, very important, but which we should be able to have a very civil discourse about. So, you know, looking at how it seemed to be deepening, especially after 2013's Measure D, I felt that there needed to be a voice for civility and a voice for looking for common ground, focusing on our core values, things like inclusivity, at least some degree of diversity, even economic diversity, which has become a lot tougher in Palo Alto recently. Palo Alto hasn't been a cheap place to live for a long time, but in the last few years it's moved from expensive to just inaccessible. And so both on the style of civility and trying to reach across and to people who might not share all of our views, I think that's an important message to send and an example that the council needs to set. And also on the substance, you know, saying that when we talk about the changes in town, the aesthetic, the traffic, the parking, questions about whether the process is the most inclusive it can be, and I don't think it is and it needs to improve, I think we also need to talk about what it means for the long-term character of the community if a lot of long-term residents are priced out. I just want to make sure that we have a robust discussion about that. It might never be possible for Palo Alto to be an affordable place to live again. That's definitely a possibility, but I think that there are policy options we haven't fully explored and we haven't had the robust discussion, I think is necessary, before we write off the possibility of a diverse Palo Alto once again.
So you've described this lack of civility as being an important reason for your candidacy. I think most people would attribute, at least in part, that dynamic to intense frustration on the part of segments of this community about the policies that the council has adopted or pursued. So you've described a condition in the community. You haven't mentioned where you, how you approach those issues. Assuming you're not viewing your role as just a passive judge of whatever body has to say to you, what are your views on these issues that have caused such great frustration for many residents in the community?
Let me take a couple parts of those. First, I definitely agree that we have to talk about, you know, how we got to the position we're in, where we're at, and where we want to move forward. On the question of civility specifically, I think that there are a lot of fingers that can be pointed. We can keep calling names and we can keep blaming, or we can move forward, recognizing that there's a lot of blame to go around. So rather than try and blame everyone, I'd like to say, let's be mature, move on, and figure out how we can improve our process to make sure that every voice in the community is actually heard. Everybody who wants to be involved is actually involved. You know, some people have tried to pin me down, say, who do you want to blame the most for where we're at? And I don't think that's necessary. I don't think we need to have a truth and reconciliation commission in order to move forward. But I do think it's really important moving forward that community involvement really be at the center of our planning process. And this is really what comes down to, our planning process. There are a few really key areas that stand out, as I mentioned a couple before. I kind of put into five main categories: traffic, parking, aesthetics, design, impact on schools and other support infrastructure, the physical infrastructure or the social infrastructure of services in the schools, and also, again, the process. I think that all of those five are very important issues that we need to address. I can go into any one of them if you like, or each of them.
Well, I would just like to get to you talking about your specific position on issues.
Sure.
Because so far you're describing the environment.
So that's very high level, right.
So why don't we just start with residential parking?
Okay.
What are you prepared to support in terms of restrictions on residential parking in downtown Palo Alto?
Okay. Well, I think that the restrictions should be on perhaps any new developments of residential units in downtown. Perhaps if people want to bring in more residential units, and especially if they want to bring in more commercial units, that's where the restrictions should be. For the residents who live downtown, right now, the city is going through a surveying process, and that's important. I spent a couple of years living in downtown San Jose, in a neighborhood where we had a residential parking permit system. And it's a double-edged sword. It can be a good thing, it can be a bad thing. There are pros and cons. I think that for the downtown area, which has seen so much parking impact as the downtown working populations have grown, you know, for them it's a daytime issue primarily, for them, I think that we should probably move forward with residential permit program. I would like to see it done as a pilot program for a couple of years, scheduled to sunset, so that then the residents can evaluate, did we like this? Did we hate it? Could we tweak it? I think one of the, you know, a couple important pieces of that, one, I think that every resident should probably get one free pass at least, and it should be door or mirror hangers, like a disabled placard. So that way, when you have a friend who comes to visit, a family member who comes to visit, you can, you know, let them park in the neighborhood.
And so what should be the boundaries of this district, this regulated permitting area?
Oh, the geographic boundaries?
Yeah.
The city's working on this right now. This is a good question. I don't know the best exact line for it to be, but we should look at where the impact is now and probably go a little bit beyond that. Because if you impose the residential permit system, you know, in the area that's most impacted right now, a lot of people who work downtown are going to park just outside of that. I think that's very likely, and then you would just impact the next neighborhood out. But it's important to note that there are a lot of people, especially the further you go out from the core of downtown, there are a lot of people who are not enthusiastic about this at all. And so we want to make sure that we really do an effective survey of the community, you know, before we put it in place. And again, I think it should have a scheduled sunset to make sure that, you know, if the community decides it's not something they loved, that they can tweak it or ask for it to be kaput.
One way to address traffic issues is, of course, to have more people taking mass transit, or walking, or biking. And I know yesterday at the Rotary debate, you were supporting smaller-scale housing, some of the housing that's near transit. So I wanted to ask what your assessment is of the city's programs right now with pedestrian transit-oriented development? Are you, do you favor what the city's done up till this point? And are there other proposals that you would have to bring more smaller housing into the city?
Okay. Well, is all right if I address the transportation a little bit first, because I think that's what needs to happen first. I think we need to deal with our transportation first, and then, or at least get that really rolling, make sure we've got a solid plan for transportation and parking, and then start talking about adding potentially more housing to deal with our jobs housing balance a little bit. And if that's all squared away, you know, maybe down the road, then we can start thinking about more office space. But I really think we need to slow down on office development, because that's really what's been contributing, I think, to the worsening traffic and parking issues. You know, more office workers, more workers in downtown in general, without the sufficient housing for them to live nearby and bike or walk, and without sufficient transportation, either intracity, because frankly, our city shuttle system is inadequate, and intercity, which is part of why I'm a big supporter of Caltrain modernization. But when it comes to housing, this is an area where we're working on the update of our housing element, and where I think that we've had a bit, in our community discussion, a bit too much lumping together of all change as negative. Office development, potential theater and high-rise development at 27 University, chain retail development, local retail development, housing development, they're all different, they all bring different pros and cons. My priority when it comes to any changes in development, especially as buildings get old and get updated or replaced, and as we go through redoing our comprehensive plan, my priority is to focus on residential and, you know, small office for local professionals and also local retail. As far as housing goes, you know, we don't, as I understand it, we don't have very much small-unit housing. And not everybody wants to live in a small unit, but there are a lot of people who do. And there is really a pent-up demand in very artificially constrained supply on that. I know a lot of people say Palo Alto is as big as it should be, and it should not grow at all, or should not grow much. I don't want to see rapid, rapid development of Palo Alto, but with our jobs housing balance as severe as it is, with the demand as it is, I think we can accommodate more housing growth if it's done very carefully. A couple of ideas for that, one is rather than just transit, but service-oriented housing. I think that's what's important. I think that having housing oriented, located near various services, whether that's retail, you know, the places where people go for their coffee, for groceries, for the dry cleaner, the daily trips, near schools, near parks, you know, it's all the things that we use on a daily basis. Because, you know, sometimes people change their job, and people might move their jobs before they move their home. I think jobs should be located near major transit hubs, but homes should be located toward, you know, closer to all those things that we go to on a daily basis. Certainly, especially with rental apartments, you know, smaller units, which tend to be more popular with younger people, just starting out their careers, those being located in job-rich areas like downtown, Cal Ave, that makes sense, because a rental is something you're a little bit more fluid in than a big house that you buy.
Are there other areas of town where you would put housing then, besides downtown and California Avenue?
Those are the ones that I think we have right now that we're focusing on. That's what I think the Housing Element group is looking at, and people across the, you know, the residentialist establishment spectrum in Palo Alto, I think, tend to agree that those are the best areas to focus if we have more housing development. Beyond that, I think that the answer is going to be more specific or area plans, where each neighborhood has a robust process of discussion to say, what do we want to do in our neighborhood? What do we want to do to improve transportation, housing, parks, et cetera, in our neighborhood? So that we can maintain a unique community character aesthetically and with the people in our neighborhood. You know, let me point to one neighborhood, my own, Palo Verde. We don't have as much of a parking problem in our neighborhood. We actually have a lot of empty nest houses in our neighborhood. Palo Alto has, I think, 8,000 square foot minimum lot size in order to have a second granny unit or in-law unit. There are a lot of people, maybe it's below the radar, but when I'm walking the neighborhood, in my neighborhood, neighborhoods across Palo Alto, there are a lot of people who have an extended family member, or renter, or a friend, sleeping on their couch, sleeping on a floor, sleeping in a master, or sleeping in extra bedroom. The city makes it very difficult to have a second unit legally. There are also a lot of second units that might not be permitted. In some neighborhoods where there isn't a parking problem, where we might have fewer people in the neighborhood than the neighborhood was designed for, you know, in like our neighborhood where houses are designed for four or five people each, and a lot of them have one or two retirees and the kids have left, I think we should talk about making it easier for people to add a second unit. And that could be for extended family, caretaker, you know, if the residents are getting older and don't want to leave their home, especially because of Prop 13 benefits, or to rent out a room to somebody, but have the additional privacy that comes with turning, say, a master bedroom into a second unit. And that wouldn't necessarily add a second story or any additional buildings. I think especially if you maintain your current floor area ratio, it should be easier to add a second unit in some neighborhoods.
So a specific area plan could be used in particular neighborhoods to address issues that are specific to them?
Precisely.
Do you see that throughout the city? Or, I mean, have you thought about like how many specific area plans you would favor? Or would you just be setting up a process for neighborhoods to?
I think it is about setting up a process. So one of the things I've discussed is, just to kind of get the ball rolling, is to have neighborhood meetings in each neighborhood. And we have dozens of neighborhoods in Palo Alto, depending on how you count them, or thirty-some, depending on which county you use. That'll take some time. That's one of the reasons I don't support reducing the council size, because I want to make sure there's at least one council member at each of these meetings. And this should be done on a rotating basis, where you have a council member, a member of Planning Transportation Commission, a member of planning staff, a member of transportation staff, go and talk to residents in each neighborhood and start opening the dialogue. And from there, if people say, you know, we should have a specific plan, and the city says that's a good idea for this neighborhood, then we move forward with that.
I want to encourage shorter answers.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. I understand why you want to expand, but the shorter the better. You said that we need to slow down on office development. How do you propose that we do that? This city is zoned for significant additional office development. So you're, it sounds as though you want to focus on other things besides office development, but what's your tool for dealing with that?
Well, as we redo our comprehensive plan, perhaps we can do some rezoning of office base, or for office space to residential, or make sure that if we ever approve anything that's outside of regular rules, again, make sure that it would be housing, or would it be mixed-use, or be retail rather than office?
We're going to be years from adopting a new comprehensive plan, and years further before adopting zoning ordinances to implement the comprehensive plan. And as I understood your earlier point, you want to focus on transportation, solving the transportation issues, and you want to encourage small-unit housing, and in the meantime, you want to keep there from being office development. I'm just trying to understand how you would achieve that.
Whatever tools at our disposal. You know, part of it might be putting tighter restrictions on, or maybe just disincentivizing office development by requiring that office development provide more to our transit management agency as we set that up. No guarantee that we can stop office development. Obviously, we have zoned for office development. What I'm talking about, you know, is the long-term vision.
So what would you say to concerned retailers, say, on California Avenue, who see changes going on all around them, which is due to the fact that property values have not increased so much, that building owners are redoing their buildings with more square footage, and therefore kicking out longtime retailers? How do we address that problem?
Well, you know, I've actually had a chance to talk to a number of the businesses on California Avenue, and the frustration is legitimate. It's because of a couple reasons. One, the work that's being done in Cal Ave, but also because of increasing property values. One thing that Palo Alto, I think, should really explore is restricting chain retail. Some other communities have done this, to say, just as an example, if you have ten locations or more nationwide, we designate you as a chain, and you either can't move in, or you have to pay extra into, you know, various impact funds in order to set up your business in Palo Alto. That's one example of something we could do to protect local retail. Also, as I mentioned before, not just small-unit housing, but also local retail is a priority for me. So again, as we zone for more, you know, or if we zone for more development, it should definitely, you know, have space for local retail. Mixed-use with residential and local retail, I think, is a great thing, if we can, you know, if we can make that happen.
Do you support any modifications to the current planned community zone process?
Yeah. The planned community process is currently on moratorium, of course. I support either its extension while we go through major, major reforms to it, or its Let me first talk about the perceived pros to the planned community process. Affordable housing advocates say that it's a necessary process in order to have affordable housing. I think there might be other processes we can use to have affordable housing in Palo Alto. As far as having some flexibility to break our zoning codes, that's something that I think that we've been inclined to do in the past because we haven't had good enough specific plans. You know, we have got the comprehensive plan, and then not very many area plans, and you've got, you know, parcel by parcel. I think if we had more specific plans, people would rely on or turn to the planned community process with less frequency. As far as reforming the planned community process, if it ever does come back, boy, a couple things need to change. We definitely need to make sure that the community is involved early on, very early on. We need to make sure there's greater transparency, and we need to make sure that there's greater community buy-in before we approve it. We also need to make sure that, and this is a tricky thing to figure out how to do it, but I do think that we need to make sure that any special allowances are commensurate with the benefits provided, and then make sure that those benefits are actually enforced. And this is something we've been, we've been talking about for years. I'm glad it's on moratorium right now.
So can we just address a couple of specific ones to kind of tease out your views?
Please.
First would be the JGNF market PC.
You know, I don't support a PC project there.
So you would have opposed that PC proposal?
Yes.
And is there something that you think you can do about it now?
At this point, I don't know if there's anything that we can do about it, but if it had come before me, I think I probably would have opposed that one.
And the reason for that?
Because I don't think the community was involved enough, and because there's also the question of whether, you know, the community benefits are sufficient.
Community was pretty involved in that when the PC was approved. In fact, that's probably why it got approved, is because it had such strong support within the college terrace neighborhood. Conditions changed, obviously. What about the Gateway project at 101 Litton?
Oh, at 101 Litton? Actually, I haven't studied that one enough to speak about that one in depth.
You know which project I'm talking about?
Oh, right, sorry. I'm just trying to blank on the...
This is the project that just opened up where Survey Monkey is at the corner of Alma and Litton.
Oh, right, right. Oh, right, 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 right.
It's the most recent PC. It was the last PC.
That's right, that's right. I'm sorry. I was just trying to blank on the address.
Right.
We're the Chamber Commerce.
101 Alma, 350 Litton.
Right. Yes, thank you.
It's not 101 Alma.
Oh, 101 Litton, sorry.
Right.
Sorry, I was trying to blank on it. Yeah, I know which building you're talking about.
So that PC, would you have voted in favor of that as it came to the council?
I don't think I would have.
And why not?
Well, one, I think it's an ugly building, and I don't think it was necessary.
What do you mean necessary? The PC wasn't necessary?
I don't think it was necessary to, you know, go outside of our regular zoning in that area. I don't think that it was appropriate to break our regular zoning codes for that development. And if that development didn't happen because we weren't able to go outside of regular zoning, then the development wouldn't happen.
Okay. And then the council shifted the benefit in that project. Initially, it had affordable housing units on the top of that building. Council eliminated those affordable housing units, and the public benefit became basically cash payment to the city for parking and other things. How do you feel about those, that aspect of it?
You know, I think affordable housing is something we do need in Palo Alto. I think that, you know, parking impact is a serious issue. I do think that any development, PC or not, needs to be providing significant in-loe fees so that we can establish, you know, more parking garages, and also provide fees for hopefully effective transit management agency.
I know that you've supported fair share payments for transit from businesses, and I'm wondering what kind of mechanism you're envisioning for making sure that the balance between residents, what the residents are paying for public transit, I assume that means roads as well, and businesses, what, how would you balance that out?
I don't have an exact percentage right now, but happy to, I think what we need to do is explore that and study that. I do think that there is a lot of interest from especially some of the larger employers in and around Palo Alto in providing some significant amount of funds for an improved transportation system within Palo Alto. One idea that I'm exploring is a more robust city shuttle system. We have a woefully inadequate city shuttle system. They're talking about some baby step changes, which I don't think are going to be nearly sufficient. I fear that it will be unsuccessful, and then people will say for years, oh, we tried improving the shuttle system, it was a failure, let's never try again. I think we should do it big, seriously, almost radically, and we should do it right. Take the time to do it right, bring all the stakeholders to the table. VTA, Stanford, companies, you know, around town, VMware, Palantir, huge employer in downtown, Google, et cetera, Downtown Business Association, bring them to the table, say, bring your innovative ideas, bring your checkbooks, let's figure this out. There need to be better options for people to get around within Palo Alto, whether that's a senior who has mobility issues. For me, that's personal, you know, my dad's 84 and he doesn't drive anymore, but there are a lot of people in that boat, especially as Palo Alto ages. Whether it's students trying to get to school. The cross-town's used pretty effectively for some students, but nothing goes over to gun and termin. And then also, of course, for employees, for people who live in now. There's an interesting generational shift, where younger people today, unlike their predecessors when they were young, are less enthusiastic about owning a car. So let's give them options. Take cars off the road by giving people options. And then those who do prefer to drive, dinosaurs like me, who actually like driving, the road is going to be clear.
Okay. I also wanted to get your take on homeless services. You favor a regional approach to solving some of the homeless problems. And Palo Alto already has the Opportunity Center, the food closet, a rotating shelter, a meals program, and the streets team. I'm wondering what additional program or services you're thinking about that Palo Alto could add?
Well, part of, you know, again, this is a regional thing. One of the important things that Palo Alto needs to do is advocacy thing. We need to be better leaders on addressing our homelessness issue. I was, this is actually, you know, one of the other reasons I got in the race. I was appalled by the council's vote to ban sleeping in your car at all hours in all parts of Palo Alto. I'm glad that was put on hold after a case in another part of California ruled that that might be illegal. Palo Alto needs to set the bar high. I think we can expand some of those programs without terribly impacting our budget, and we can talk with our county representatives and others in the region to say, let's deal with this regionally. And if it can't be solved regionally, then we deal with it at the state level.
Okay.
We bump it up. But Palo Alto needs to be setting the lead, not just being reactive. If there is a concern that if we provide more services, then we'll just become magnet, then again, we work with our regional partners.
So do you not favor a ban on parking in your car anywhere in Palo Alto?
If there was going to be any restrictions on sleeping in your car, I would definitely want it to be restricted to some areas at some times, but I don't, I don't favor criminalizing poverty.
You say if there was going to be. I'd like to get what your view is. Do you support restrictions on overnight camping in cars in certain, if so, what areas of Palo Alto?
I would be willing to discuss that in certain areas, in residential areas in particular. But what I think we do need to do is, you know, maybe getting back to programs we could expand, is make sure that there are places where somebody could take their car and sleep, if that's the only place that they can sleep.
So what more information would you need to decide whether you supported that, a program that would limit that in residential neighborhoods?
Well, this would, again, go back to a community discussion. If a neighborhood came to the council and said, we want to have a limit on parking in our neighborhood, then we would say, or I would say, okay, if there is a problem with people... then we would say, or I would say, okay, if there is a problem with people sleeping in their cars in your neighborhood, where else can those people go that's nearby?
So you're not aware that that's already happened? I mean, there's already been a lot of that conversation.
You know, I understand that that was a big part of why we had the ordinance that we had last year. I think that it went much, much too far.
Right, so I'm just trying to pin you down on exactly what your view is of it now.
My view is that a ban on all parking at all times, or all sleeping in your car at all times of day in all parts of Palo Alto is unjust, and it, you know, it's a sledgehammer when you need a scalpel.
I understand that.
So where would we allow it perhaps? Maybe in commercial areas, maybe we find parking lots where businesses or churches are willing to work with us. But we need to make sure that those options are available before we make, you know, sleeping in your car illegal.
I wanted to get your assessment of the June Grand Jury Report about Palo Alto Council Transparency Issues, and your assessment of the council's response to that earlier this month. What do you think is sufficient?
I'm still considering their response. I was there at the council meeting for part of that discussion myself. You know, again, one of the reasons I do what I do professionally, and one of the reasons why I decided to run for city council is because I often find myself frustrated by what I see in government. People not being involved in the process, things happening behind closed doors that don't need to. I'm happy to hear that the council is, you know, trying to make more of their negotiations public. That's a step in the right direction. I think the default always needs to be for transparency. The default always needs to be for community involvement, early on, as early on as possible.
So do you think the council has done enough to respond?
I think they're on the right track. We'll see how they act from here on out. I was glad to hear several apologize. I think things are moving in the right direction.
Do you see any role for the city or for you as a council member regarding the Buena Vista mobile home parking?
Absolutely. I do, I do. I think that the owner, if the owner of the property wants to sell their property and go do something else with their life, that should be fine. I've actually spent a lot of time in Buena Vista. One of my best friends when I was a teenager lived there. I was, there was at least one year in particular. I probably spent more time there than at home, except when I was sleeping. So it's kind of personal. And the community is behind doing something. You know, a lot of the people who were opponents of the Measure D, the Maybell Project last year, I think were maligned as being anti-housing or anti-poverty, and that's not the case. A lot of people who were involved in the No Unde campaign last year are big advocates for helping our low income community, or lower income community at Buena Vista stay in Palo Alto. I think it would be the largest displacement in Palo Alto history if those residents are forced out. So the question is the role of the council. Again, I think the role for the council is leadership on this. I don't know if we need to spend a lot of city money on it, but if we had, say, saved some money on redesign of City Hall, and we save some money on a bridge, and don't let all of our projects get way out of budget, we probably have enough money to combine with the money that the residents in Buena Vista and the neighbors, you know, and people supporting them are able to come up with. And we could probably find enough funds to buy the property, whether the city is involved or just involved in bringing people to the table, we could probably find the money to buy the property, hand it over to a residents' association, so they could be the owners and, you know, the people in charge of their own fate, and let the owner go do whatever he wants with his life. I think that the numbers are around $15 million for its value as a mobile home park, or about $30 million at the highest and best use at its current zoning. I think that money can be found in Palo Alto. The city council should take a leadership role in pulling that money together.
Do you support city funds going into that project?
You know, again, this is, to clarify, I think that would be a last resort. Because I want to make sure we're not wasteful of our money. But I think that preventing the largest displacement in Palo Alto history might not be a waste of money. I'd like to see it come from philanthropists in the community first, if possible. And I think that could probably be done as well.
I'd also like to ask, is there one city council decision over the past four years that really resonated with you, that you agreed with, and that you thought was going in the right direction?
Moving forward on Transit Management Agency. I think that's the right decision. I think that's really important. I'm glad that they're moving forward on that. That's very recent.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you.